This is the meeting of the Berlin Select Board for October 2nd, 2023. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:01. And the first thing we have to do is approval of minutes, August 28th and September 25th. I just had a question on the 25th.
Sure.
The due Portugal entertainment license, were there contingencies that needed to be mentioned, maybe?
There's a couple approvals sign off by all departments.
Okay, I don't think there was anything written.
Let me make sure that gets added.
Okay, other than that, I have nothing else.
Have we received those, like, write offs? Have they satisfied their contingencies yet? Or do you not know?
I do not know. Let me find out from Mary. I've seen emails fly, but I haven't caught up on all of them.
That's fine. I'm finding make a motion to approve both minutes for the one of the 25th amended to include, you know, once they satisfy the contingencies on the inspections.
For the August 28th and the 25th? Is that what you said?
Yes, both minutes, but only the amendment on the 25th.
Okay.
There wasn't an amendment I could see on the.
No, I don't think so.
All right, I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. General public comment. All right, seeing nothing. We've got a housing production plan update, presentation and discussion. Hi, it's you.
Come on up, have a corner.
So, just introduce myself, Emily Globbets. I'm a principal planner at the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. Been working with primarily the planning board and the housing partnership on this plan since last year. This is an update to the 2017 plan, which expired in 2022. These are five-year plans that are approved by the state. So primarily the past year, we've been working on updating the housing and population data with the new 2020 census data that came out. And then local sources, when we could fill that in from the assessors. We did a public outreach component. We had a survey out last year for, we got about 200 responses to that. We held a public forum, I think we had like 25 to 30 people show up for that. Had a really good presentation and breakout activity, discussion. So, and then just reviewing the goals from the previous plan, updating those to see, you know, what has been accomplished, what is still relevant, and what is kind of a new goal that the town could focus on for the next five years. So, and then kind of come together, created this updated plan. It takes a lot of, I mean, the previous plan was a fantastic plan, so it took a lot of the good content from that, and then just updated anything that needed to kind of be renewed. So basically, we have a draft plan right now. It was approved by the planning board last week. And then we need approval by the select board, and then I can submit it to the state. They've got about a month to review it and get back with any comments to the town, and then I can incorporate those comments and send it back to them. So, yeah, it's a process, but we're right at the end there. And so, really, the end product will be something that will recommend future strategies for, you know, increasing affordable housing, but also more diverse housing options to meet the needs of people living here and future populations. And now the town has CPA and Affordable Housing Trust Fund, kind of providing like a clear strategy for those groups on what they should focus on for housing initiatives.
That's going to be helpful.
Yeah, and also exciting, the town is participating in CMRPC's regional housing coordinator. Again, we just hired someone who will be working with five towns, one of which is Berlin, to implement any affordable housing initiatives. So this will also be like a document that will guide her as she's working on anything that the town really needs related to housing. So, that's kind of my quick summary there. I was just hoping if anyone had any questions or anything stood out of the plan, just let me know. Otherwise, I'm hoping for a, just a vote to approve the plan tonight, and then I have a document that the chair can sign, and then I can send it off to the state.
That was quite a report. It was a great, it was a great report.
Yeah, it's a lot of data. It's a lot of data. So hopefully we got through that, but we tried to lay it out in like nice tables and everything and explain the data. Yeah.
Yeah, so are there any questions?
I'll just start, Jessi, that's the housing coordinator. She actually met with the housing trust last Wednesday. And I can say more when we do sort of committee reports, but she was there. And the housing trust sadly wasn't around when 90% of this work was done, although it's been shared with them, and I don't think, I sit on the housing trust as well. And so, I don't think we had any sort of questions or issues. It looked pretty good, and we're on the same page that it might help push some of that. And I think some of the, much of the implementation is ultimately going to be done a little bit between the housing trust and the planning commission. Because some of it might be some zoning changes, and some of it might be some funding from the housing trust to push some of this stuff along a little bit.
Yeah, I think that's planned.
There was a question that I had on page 59 about the community one-stop-for-growth application, which talks about grants. Who does that? Who's responsible for putting in that grant? Is it you, is it us, is it housing, is it planning? It didn't, it didn't say.
Typically, I mean, anybody could work on it, but I would usually organize that. And often I'd work with CMRPC to do so.
Yeah, we're happy to help with that. We get funding from the state to kind of help towns develop applications, so we are really happy to work with that.
Yeah, because it sounded a great plan. Where it talked about support for improved land use practices, as you mentioned, diverse housing, renewable energy, feasibility studies. So, all of that, because it kind of supports the data that you were saying about, like, the number of elderly, single people in town, which actually kind of made me fall out of my chair, that it went from 4.4% in 2010 to 13.6%, you know, a mere 10 years later. And the household doubled from like 69 to 171. So you can see that there's, there's a need that's creeping on that. So I just didn't know if those grants, who's ever responsible for them, could kind of help some of the issues that you pointed out.
Yeah, primarily, yeah, I would say town administrator and CMRPC tackle that with input from the boards, of course, you know, if they have something they want to target.
But yeah, no, that was the only one that I had. Fabulous, very eye-opening report on that. So, well done, Emily.
Thank you.
Well done, Emily and Plan. Well done.
It's been a pleasure to work with the town. Berlin's awesome.
Did you, did you get a chance to look at the survey from UMass Boston?
Yeah, I looked at some of those results, yeah, they kind of aligned with some of the results we got.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, I incorporated a few things referencing that study as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was a great study that was done.
Yeah.
That also was very eye-opening.
I was just hoping it was helpful.
It was, yeah.
Good. All right. You know, especially around the, where you talk, you, you, Emily, talked about the affordability gap, where if your salary is 106, multiply it by two and a half, you're going to buy PEGMAF, a house for $300,000, but the average house in Berlin is, you know, $650,000. So where does that magical $200,000 to $300,000 that maybe a first-time buyer who wants to come in our town, we basically said, sorry?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, and some of that's probably going to end up coming from some zoning changes that allow cottage housing, because some of it has to do with the amount of land we have to have in town to build on. And where do we find spots where we can potentially shrink that? So maybe on an acre, you can put a, you know, 1,200 square foot, two or three bedroom, where that's not ever going to sell for a million and a half, and that could be more affordable for more folks.
Yeah, I mean, the amount of land that's like sucked up. You've got 2,500 acres of land that has some level of protection on it, another 308 owned by the state, and 1,059, that's a combination of 61, you know, A and B. And I'm thinking, that's a lot of land, you know, that we have. So, yeah, what, what can you do with that 2,500 acres of land to make Berlin a little bit more affordable? When you have a median income of $106,000, you know, people are going to be like, can't, can't live there, you know?
Yeah, and certainly Berlin has some of those extremes. We have several million-dollar-plus homes that don't sit on the market for very long before they get sold. But we also have some people who have been in their houses for generations, which, you know, might take some work to keep up. And also trying, again, finding the right plots. The housing trust is looking at some of the tax Thailand, it's one of the reasons I both asked that from you. Like, are there pieces of lots the town might even own right now, where we could work with the developer and say, you can develop on this house, on this property, but, you know, the house can't be bigger than X and can't sell for more than Y? And whether or not that's a formal 40B, or whether it's just something that's, you know, structured in its size and plot that it's going to be more affordable for folks? Because it's also the people who are above 40B and aren't looking at those, you know, $700,000 homes that we might be able to do something with, where, that we use housing trust funds to subsidize the developer a little bit. I think there'll be things out there. And we're looking forward to working with the new housing coordinator, too. She's working, again, we're working with five towns. She has a history of working with, she came over with the Cambridge.
Housing Authority, I think?
Housing Authority, I was going to say, it was a housing something or other in Cambridge, but she, she has some nice housing stuff, and we're going to be able to hear what other towns are doing. And I think we're going to get, we're going to get a lot out of it. We get her for, I think it's like even four or six hours a month, which is not tons, but it's staffing to a committee that already has some money and volunteers to it, and.
Well, it's nice to hear some ideas, and then you can run with it and go do all the digging. You know, it's funny to see a population of over 4,000 people by 2050, and I'm thinking, where are they all going to fit?
Where are they going?
Where are they going?
I don't know how much more we're going to be doing.
Yeah, we'll have more housing, well, I'll be dead by then, but yeah.
I mean, we've done two large senior housing projects in the last couple of years. You know, sorry, the Eco Village, sorry, Hill came in, and that's, what, 200, 300 people there? Those type of projects aren't really, now that we've made the 40B there, those type of projects are probably not as common in the city and in town anymore. So hopefully the growth will slow down a little bit.
I should have mentioned, we're actually doing a population challenge right now. We were contacted, if you recall, by the state, because it turns out they based our anticipated growth on the River Bridge development and used that to build us out over the next series. So that may change. Because, and I don't know how long that process takes. I assume it's not very quick. We're working with UMass and their Population and Census Center, and they send the data off to the secretary, I believe it's the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Office and Census Bureau to make sure that we get that information updated. So we had to actually go through and pull building permit information so that, in great detail, and many thanks to Leanne and Mary and Ruchu all worked on that, so that we could show them what we actually did, rather than estimates over that period of time. So, it'll be interesting to see what happens there.
Okay, any more questions?
No, I would make a motion that we approve the housing production plan.
Agreed, second. Okay, anything else?
No, it's an incredible document.
Yeah? All right, then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Excellent.
Good job.
It was like one of those documents, it's like a book, you know, you're reading, you're like, one more chapter. Okay, five more pages. Wow, look at that one, all right. Okay, now, wait a minute, that reference, so, yeah, the, oh, I'll just break it down into chunks, turned into like, holy crap, I'm just going to read this entire document because it's really filled with a lot of good stuff, so.
I kept stopping to like, text her, do you realize that Berlin did like this?
I did the same thing, I'm like yelling into the other room, did you know? Yeah.
My hustle, yeah, is tired of some of these stats at this point, I'm sure.
Thank you, thank you, Emily, for all your work and the folks that you work with.
Yeah, it's been a pleasure. I will keep you updated with what the state says.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thanks so much, have a good night. Thank you. All right, ready for our general department update? Highway, pick me, pick me.
I just have one more. Chris is still on.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
Once I get his, I'll bring that up here.
Thank you much.
Welcome.
Welcome, it's lovely to see you.
So, first I got to apologize, I did get that email today that our reports are supposed to be due on the first, and I've already failed. I don't have last month done yet, but I'll get it, and we'll start getting them done for the first of the month. Well, now it's in the calendar.
Which email?
Our department, our mother reports are supposed to be on the first.
Did I send that email?
No, I believe it came from maybe Mary.
Okay, I was worried that I sent an email that I didn't remember sending.
Blame the new admin in the back. It's always the nice thing to do. Welcome aboard, you're home.
You'll have mine probably in the next couple of days.
That's fine.
All right, so it wasn't really a, I'd say overly productive month. We didn't get the work code done up on the render road project, just for scheduling-wise. Every time it rained, it pushed the company off more and more. We were able, though, it did give us time to get some burn put in, where a lot of it we know was going to wash out. So we had the burn put in to prevent from, you know, endless washouts and things like that. And it also gave us time to actually back it all up, the grass started growing, so, you know, people were happy about that. We're back up there now, doing some filling. And as you read the report, like, we're obviously behind on some of the things in town that usually we're up with by now, some of the mowing, you know, the brushed up on the ground. But I will never use, you know, us being short-staffed as an excuse, it's more of a setback. Eventually, we will get, you know, everything caught up to where we should be at this time of year. So the speed feedback signs, those went in. They were actually supposed to be in, we were supposed to be phase two shipping, phase three shipping, in the middle of July. And they were supposed to be installed before school started. Ultimately, they showed up the Thursday before the week it opened, so we didn't get a chance to put them in. So we ended up putting them together, putting one together one day, putting the other one together the next day, the third day, we ended up putting them in the ground. So they are up, they're functioning speed-wise, just not programmed to actually flash when they're supposed to. That's inherent thing.
What was flashing at me, though?
Yeah, the speed part will. But the beacon on the top should only flash when school is in session.
Oh, gotcha. I thought maybe it was, are they solar?
Yes.
Okay, because when, you know, it's a big, long, cloudy day, then, you know, like the next day, there's, there's no display.
Well, there's four batteries in them, but really, they haven't had much time to actually charge. And we had a problem with the one down on the far side of the school zone. There were two vertical rows of LEDs that weren't even working. We sent that one back, and we just got the new one installed, maybe yesterday morning. If not, it was the morning before.
Are the batteries better than the solar sign in the center of town?
That one's been taken, that one's running really good.
Okay.
And actually, we just started with a complete screech program that's going to incorporate the new ones. Because right now, we don't dare put them up because we have no way to protect them without getting railed.
What are the new ones?
They're actually the push-button operator ones.
Oh, so you can cross the street?
Yeah. So those would be part of that. I just don't know how long it'll take for that whole program to come together. That's something we're working on, but that'll be in next month or three.
Is there any way, Kristen, when those signs go in, that you can have an officer there? Because I have a feeling that people are going to bang the button, they're going to go across, and for how many years, people have driven 80 miles an hour through the center of town, that they're not going to realize that it's a, you got to stop? So I'm thinking, maybe a little police presence to get people used to the.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I've seen a couple people almost get hit.
Well, yeah, they don't even stop. You could be in the crosswalk.
And they don't stop.
And they don't stop.
No.
It's like the third or fourth car will see you and then stop.
Correct.
Which forces the oncoming car to be like, oh my God.
Correct. So I'm thinking, when that's ready, Eric can put an officer there. I don't know what he'd do or what she'd do, but maybe with a cruiser, you might, people might slow down.
Well, there actually was one, so Jim was trying to cross from the cemetery one day, and one of the officers was parked right there at the 1870. He saw it, so once Jim got across the street, he went and pulled the car over because he didn't stop for him in the crosswalk. I don't know if he ticketed him, but he made it aware that, you know, the guy was in the crosswalk. He was off the curb in the crosswalk.
Well, maybe it's something we can use with the blinky sign, too, as an awareness. I don't know. But cool, that that's finally coming.
Yeah, so that eventually will be done. So part of that whole litigation thing with the 495, 290, the Pleasant Street, it was either CMRPC or MassDOT had the speed trailers put in, there's two of them down there. And within the first day, the residents noticed it and was sending feedback to the highway. We did order the larger 25 mile an hour signs at their recommendation, we did get them put up. The one thing we haven't done yet was the actual pavement markings, again, because of the rain. We haven't had an actual time to get down there and lay it out. The one at the post office is, it's a lot more simpler because it's just doing the hash marks coming around. It basically keeps you on what would be South Street, not Pleasant Street. But the one up on Pleasant Street is going to take some time because we have to remove the white paint, the stop line, to incorporate the yellow ones. So we're hoping to get to that. I'm not sure when, but it's got to be before it gets too cold. That's really it for highway. We actually had a busier time here in the public buildings. The regular ongoing cleaning was done, the mowing trimming. We had to install a new tarp on the old fire station because the other one just, it lasted just about a year, got shredded. So that one has a new tarp on it. All the furnaces were clean, they're ready to go for the year. RTU 2, which services the Police and Fire Department, that's the one on the lower side of the roof, they had an issue with the, the air wasn't blowing, wasn't doing what it was supposed to. Viking came in and found out that the stage one, because there's two halves to it, so stage one cooling, the fan was seized out. So it wasn't, when the fan spins, it actually pulls cool air through the coils and cools it down. It wasn't doing a job. So it's been since replaced. And while he was up there, he also found out that whoever did the original wiring, there was, there was a little box up on top that wasn't wired the way it should have been. So he took it upon himself to put the right voltage into what it was supposed to be done. So that's where things were. The last thing that we had to do in the sanitary survey was actually put a doorknob on the, a lockable doorknob, on a door that houses the water tank and the wall pump at the library, because they had to have it secured. The problem we were having was, it's the old-style door that has the whole big mortise-in-lock. So nothing we could do that was going to make it. So we ended up getting a plate that kind of goes over it low so long. Where you could basically, it covers up that whole thing, where you could put a regular latch bolt in with the doorknob. That's what took the lot. But that's done. Hopefully, everything from the state, they signed off on what they needed to, that we needed to get done. The girl that we deal with from Whitewater was supposed to get back to me to make sure everything was done on there. But I haven't heard from her since she did the sampling here. And that was it. Just the regular stuff into department. There was one night that I had worked downstairs, and just, you know, for something to do. The slop sinks downstairs, they weren't draining. And come to find out, every time they mop the floor, they dump the bucket there, and so it basically filled up with sand. So the drains were taken apart clean and now they're working right. RTU 1 is slated to be here October 18th. We actually just got an email today from the gentleman that's doing it. They want to do an onsite construction walkthrough Thursday.
Yeah.
I believe Thursday 8, 8:30 is tomorrow. So they're going to come here and take a look at anything, so hopefully that's still going to happen.
The old firehouse roof?
Yes.
When, when were we talking about putting that on a warrant?
So there was funding approved previously for that, but we stopped and did not move forward until the facility study tells us what to do with the building.
That's what we're waiting for, gotcha.
Yeah, because.
But it's in an article, it's safe.
Yeah, if I remember, it was like.
Oh, yeah, I thought we had, but then I thought, well.
Yeah, it was just over 20, it might be 28.5 or something like that, that was approved for it.
Okay.
But there's issues with the boiler, and so also if the study says that's something that we should sell or whatever, it's a deteriorating asset. They do this really cool thing where they make a determination on like a percentage scale valuation, and they do math to figure out whether you should put money into a building or not. And they'll be giving us that in a database as part of the study.
Okay. Rather than opinion, math rather than opinion?
Yeah.
Darn, I had an opinion, okay.
But you're still entitled to opinions.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And there is no update on the South Street break-in. Still haven't been heard, you know, if on track or not.
Have you got any resumes for your open position?
Well, we did have two. We received one before we even posted the position, and one just came in.
Today?
Today. Both looking for a full-time work. The first one, I'd never seen an application filled out 100% complete. Like, there was not a line that was not written on. The second one, not so much. Definitely not so much.
It's always good to have comparison.
The position's only part-time?
Yeah, the position that we posted for was part-time. The two people that just put in for it are looking for full-time. We'll still reach out to them and say, this is, this is what we're offering, you need to start of interest.
And one of the things that we talked about is the potential for that position to grow into a 40-hour-a-week position because I strongly encouraged Fred to put in for another 15, 10 or 15 hours, depending on what that position ends up being, in the 25 budget, because it's already a benefited position at 25 or 30 hours, so you're just adding that extra amount. The department, he won't say it, but I will, the department is severely short-staffed, and everyone is doing an amazing job. But it's a department that we, we need to look at making sure we're adequately staffing and not burning people out, and that's really important, so.
Yeah, especially the highway superintendent.
Correct.
Like I was telling Kristen, as much as I'd like to have a full-time guy on, you know, on our team, I'd rather have one here, because the time it takes me to stop what I'm doing, come in here, address some little thing, even just taking a call today about the acorns on the ramp at the library, it's like, you know, we can't be there every day, so they're going to fall. It's just, it's hard to get everywhere all the time, but at least if someone was here, they could address little things, like right away. And, you know, once, because the building's over 20 years old, you know, and there's really no upkeep.
It's going to start to break, right.
Yeah, so we need to start, you know, doing the upkeep like we should have been doing.
Right.
And we just haven't. So it'd be awesome if there was a guy here 40 hours a week. We could definitely keep it busy.
I think we saw that with the ADA study when they were looking at the pipes, and it was like, yeah, they should have been replaced a while ago. Yeah, but we didn't have the time, yeah, and not the money, yeah.
Yeah. And things like that, I mean, I wasn't even thinking about, geez, maybe I should go change that sink pipe. But at least now we know, so it's something we can start looking at, and actually, you know, hey, this was changed at this time.
Right, you've been understaffed for years, and you do the work of many. And I know that even though groups are supposed to follow the process of reaching out to Kristen and reaching out to you to do something, I know they go right to you, and you're like, okay, so.
Wow, lately I haven't been.
Send angry people to me, that's fine.
Well, if they're not angry, it's, hey Fred, do you have a minute, could you? And you're like, okay. So, because of the size of this, I know that you just do stuff for the people in town, but.
Now we schedule it, and it's not like, you know, we can't come today. We can come next week, or we can come the end of the week, but like, you know, our stuff has to come first. If we have time, if we get a rainy day, if we get a late morning, whatever, we'll, we'll come do it.
I think the idea, like you said, of having somebody focused on the buildings, indoor, outdoor, upkeep, maintenance, repair, I think is going to hopefully help. And to find the right person that can work independently without Fred having to constantly supervise, so it's a little bit higher level of a position in that way, should hopefully take a little bit of that pressure off.
Oh, yeah, because it's like, we still have light bulbs that we haven't had a chance to get down here and chain-cut. It's on the list, but it's like, when are we going to do it?
It's a priority.
Waiting.
I have a headlamp, I'll start wearing it.
You know, I had one on here the other night.
Did you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you did.
Well, I think you're doing an amazing job.
Well, the guys are doing an amazing job.
You are, too.
For what they do.
And so are you. Yes, you are. Okay. You're doing an amazing guiding job. So, any other questions?
How are you doing in finding or having enough people to do sanding and plowing for the winter?
Oh, that's never a problem.
Okay.
So to complement our staff, a lot of the guys, like, we have three people from town that come back every year. Two of them operate a motor. One of them will be like a filling driver. If, if we have a CDL guy out, he'll come and fill that. If not, he's in a pickup truck. Yeah, we never have an issue with snow equipment. If anything, we won't have enough equipment because there was one other person in town that just offered up their service. But if we have a winter like they're talking about, it wouldn't be bad to have the extra people, should we have to take someone off the road, give them a break, put someone else in the truck.
They'll do mowing in December if it's a, if it's a.
When it's so raining.
As, as luck would have it, I do right now have one of our part-time drivers mowing grass for us.
Yeah.
Because we lost our seasonal. He just had to go to college.
Yeah.
Rude.
I know. And I told him, if he doesn't come back to see us there for a winter break, he don't come back to see me for a job this spring. But no, the seasonal plough driver, Dave, has been a tremendous help. He can only give, you know, a couple days a week, a few hours a week, whatever, but it's like, you know what, we'll take you. Our, our senior work-off guy, he comes in for four hours, well, our second guy. I've actually had him on a mower a week ago. It's like, you know, we have this work to do, I need you to go around and cut around, and then Dave's going to be on the big mower. What are you?
You show me.
That's, it's easy. It's going to be nice all week, grass is going to grow.
I know, it's like 80.
The fields have to be cut by Thursday because they paint on Fridays.
Wait, where was she being?
Are you afraid I'm going to write something in the field?
Cross me your heart.
Just put a heart. A little heart, just put a little heart. Exactly. I would help if you needed it, you know that.
Time to get up.
Okay.
Practice on hers first, just in case.
Okay.
And then, and then we'll.
And then we'll talk?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll see how you do with an open field.
All right. Thank you, Fred. Any more questions? We're all set, or?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'm onto my next post-it note.
And we're on to the Town Administrator Report.
All right. So first of all, this evening, I would like to welcome Dee Green, our new Administrative Assistant to the Town Administrator, who started today and hasn't run screaming from the building yet, so I'm really excited about that, because that's always a positive sign. So Dee comes to us from Oxford, as you know, and we're really excited and happy to have her here, so thank you, Dee. We interviewed two applicants for the Assistant Treasurer Collector position, and the recommended candidate is on the agenda this evening. We had quite an active Personnel Committee meeting last Wednesday, where we approved the creation of the position that we just discussed with Fred. Also approved the job ad and a revised job description for the Library Page Position. Both of those positions haven't posted. And we approved the final Employee Policy Manual, which has been sent out to all employees to sign off along with the annual anti-harassment and discrimination policy that yes, does have to be signed off annually. Fred just handed me some back, which is great, so those will go in the employee personnel files. And then the other thing that we discussed that was requested, and actually was also requested at FinCom, is that I develop a five-year municipal staffing plan, which I think is a great idea, and I'm actually starting to dub the FY '25 Budget, the Year of Staffing. I think FY '26 is going to be the Year of Capital, because the facilities study, what it's done, is going to show where our deferred maintenance and our problems are. But right now, we have some serious staffing needs in certain areas. And I think this plan will help as we go through the budget process, so I'll be working on that, too. I'm excited to report that we submitted a half a million dollar grant application for, through the State Complete Streets Program, to improve pedestrian safety and connectivity around the center of town. So it includes sidewalks, ADA-compliant ramps, some flashing beacons, and visibility improvements along Central, Woodward, and Carter Street. And also the installation of some bike racks. So this is actually the first time the town is applying for the grant since we adopted the plan in 2016. One of the things that was proposed by the consultants to really strengthen our application was to provide matching funds in the form of paving those roads using Chapter 90 funds as part of this project. So we don't have to make a firm commitment to that, but we can say that we hope to use it. So they put that in there, we don't have to put a set amount. So that has been submitted as of Friday. Also, as we've been talking about, the radio tower equipment installation project has been quite challenging, because as you know, there is a new tower company, American Tower, and only certain vendors can work on their towers. So we actually had to put out the scope of work and re-advertise the installation of all of the equipment that we now have on those towers. That is out. The quotes are due October 18th. And again, people have to be qualified vendors, but according to procurement, we still have to advertise it and go through the process. The Municipal Facilities Study and Reuse Plan Work Group, which consists of myself, Fred, Peg, Janet Lamy, and Amy Grenier, are meeting with the consulting firm this week to go over basic information and the pre-survey questionnaires that we need to get completed on each of the buildings, which is quite extensive. Coffee Talk with Public Safety, the Select Board, is scheduled for October 12th at 5:30 PM at the town offices. Good news on the hybrid meeting upgrades, they will be finished, and we are doing our training this week. So hopefully, we will be all set. There were a couple parts that were missing, they are in, and we are good to go. I'm in the process of doing the FY '23 Department Head Evaluations, and they are also subsequently evaluating their employees. We have an Administrative Finance Team meeting this week to kick off budget season and talk about the recap sheet, tax rate, some of the audit recommendations. That'll be our first AFT meeting with our new assessor, Linda Barisha. So that will be great for us all to sit down and get together. I met with Superintendent Costello and Principal Campbell on Friday to discuss planning for migrant families. As you know, we're in a state of emergency, given the large number of migrant families that are homeless and the lack of available shelter space and funding for these families. And I will also be speaking tomorrow morning at a food pantry presentation that they're giving to students from Pittsburgh State University about the, some of the planning and issues surrounding those matters as well. So we have been working and continuing to work to make sure that we're prepared to support migrant families should they be housed here at the hotel that we have in town. As of yet, nothing, but we will certainly keep you posted. Had our quarterly check-in with Lori Trehan's Chief of Staff, Jake, whose last name I can't pronounce, during which we talked about ARPA funding, solar tax credits, the radio project that we've put in for Phase Three with them for $400,000 that we should be hearing in December. It's still on a good path, and they're hopeful. No guarantees, but things are sounding good. And did our annual fall insurance review with our MIA rep. And also talked about a proposed update to the town's sign-by-law, which would enable the school and the town to have an LED sign if approved by Town Meeting in May. And when I say LED sign, I should add a tasteful LED sign, that they're looking at very specific parameters around which those signs could be created. And they're talking about one at BMS and potentially one on the Town Common. So it's not just a blanket, you know, opening of LED signs for anybody in town. And that's what I have for you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Questions? Oh, no, I've got a lot of like texts in here. My questions aren't that long, but I'll defer to you two guys first. I am all right. I have talked with Kristen, so I.
Yeah, mine aren't as much on the report, it's just sort of correspondence and other things that aren't on the report. I don't know if we want to do that now, or just go.
Yeah, correspondence was like my first one.
So I might hit someone of yours, sorry. The rail trail?
Yeah.
We had an email about that again, and as we had talked at one point about where, what authorized the old rail trail committee and whether or not that was Select Board or Town Meeting, and whether or not we are allowed to just reappoint people to it, or we'll take a Town Meeting to re-energize that.
So my understanding is that was a vote of the Select Board, and it was disbanded?
Right.
So you would just have to create a new committee with a new charge and a composition number of members and write that up? And that's something Select Board can do.
Okay. Alcohol on town properties?
Yes.
A one-day alcohol permit?
Yes.
It's not on sort of agenda for tonight, what would be a, let's assume for a moment we wanted things to happen. And I know that there, there are questions, because we've not done alcohol on town properties before, at least my memory. Yeah. We, in theory, could, I, I know they're looking for a Land of October event, which our next formal meeting is the 16th. We do have coffee talk on the 12th, where if we thought it was a five-minute to two-minute thing and not a five-minute to hour conversation.
Who is this? REC. REC and Cloverleaf.
Right.
They want to do, Clover, the REC is looking for Cloverleaf on their October 22nd, which is a Sunday of fall festivities, to have Cloverleaf come do a beer tent. And. In where? South Commons.
South Commons.
Oh, okay.
So my, oh, but.
Cloverleaf right now is doing something in town, it's on private lands.
Right.
But, but they're doing something now, and, and I would be interested to hear if we're having the conversation in a timely manner, like if we could get from, you know, police and others, like, have there been any issues with the one they've had? And maybe even a little bit from REC. You might even see whether or not, if we did this on the meeting on the 16th, whether or not there's enough time for them to. I know, I don't think this, I don't think the alcohol makes or breaks their event. I think it would be a, they think they would add to it.
Correct.
But I think they can go ahead with their planning, because the event's going to happen.
Correct.
Whether or without this, and so.
Yeah. I think that, when we started talking about it a little bit today, too, that Dee has a little bit of experience with this in Oxford. I've always been advised by Town Council never to do it because of liability in the town, assuming that risk when you allow alcohol and what comes with it on, on public property. But if you are to go forward with it, they recommend a very high insurance policy, something like a 1 million, 3 million liquor liability and general liability policy. So it's something we would have to research with legal counsel, insurance company, public safety, to see how they feel about it. I wouldn't recommend doing it without a policy from the board on all of the information they have to provide and parameters. So I, my thinking is it would be a challenge to get it done for this 22nd. We can certainly try if, if that's something the board is interested in discussing, but.
We did do wine and beer tasting at the 1870 Town Hall.
Yeah, that's right, actually, yeah, yeah.
And that was the.
It was the Food Pantry.
Food pantry. It was a.
BJ's, yep.
BJ, well, it was through BJ's.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how that all worked. Well, there's also a question that I have, too, about Solomon Pond. I mean, they came to us and asked for a liquor license, well, pour. One day, yeah. Yeah, one day for three months, so is that town property? Because if it's not town property, why did they come to us?
Because it's in the town, just like the one at, at Berlin Orchids has come to us as well.
You're the local licensing authority, so for one day, you guys have to give it out.
Right.
All right. So that's not town-owned property at the mall?
No, it's not. No, it's owned by the mall. Yeah, you know, I think lawyers are paid to tell us things that have risk to it. But everything, I think, driving here tonight had risks to it, because there's cars on the road. I, I, I love to think about a way to try to do it.
Well, it was just a tasting, it was a tasting for the food pantry.
Yeah, but you could have a lot of tastings. I went to all of them, I did have tastings. We had people with us who knew, took a drive home and weren't having as much tasting, so.
Right.
You also have a pond there and an unpaved parking area, so it is a little bit of concern there, so you just have to be careful.
And so I think it's just, let's make, I'd like to put it that on the 16th, and if you could do some more research on it, then it could be, we can't pull it off in time. But I'd like to see whether or not we can give it a try. And sorry, I dusted off some old emails this week. So Speed Lemon and Barnes Hill Road? We never really lowered it to, as far as anyone could find. And so the next steps to lower it would have been a, a. Speed study that we'd have to go up with the money for, correct?
Correct.
And we've not allocated all of our ARPA funds. We could, in theory, use ARPA funds for that if we wanted.
We have, you have conditionally allocated all of your ARPA funding, depending on getting, you know, quotes, things could come in lower. And in fact, you, you may find that some of them are coming in a little bit lower, I'm not sure, so.
I'll save my other comment for later. The lease for the school space?
I swear, it's on there, and I'm doing my very best, it's just a function of time.
Retiree health benefits, they were expecting at Actuarial Study a while ago. Do you know where that went? Is there numbers to come out?
I have it actually tentatively scheduled for the 16th. There is a possibility that it might be the 23rd. I'm not sure which meeting they're available to attend, but we are there.
I have a couple of those, but I'll save them for other weeks, I've asked enough.
You kind of bounced around some of mine, so well done, well done. Boy Scouts space.
Yeah.
Can we meet with them on the 16th? I mean, you know, because we're leaders of the town, they specifically said they want to meet with the board. I'd love to be able to hear from them, their concerns, their needs, why a room won't work for them, Council on Aging's concerns, what happened? Was there a breakdown of communication? Because looking, from the outside looking in, it looked like there was, you know, but I don't know. I wasn't privy to all of those emails about, you know, was there an issue? Were people notified? I, I don't know. So I'd rather have a collection of everybody involved to have an open meeting chat and figure out collectively what our heads can come up with for solutions.
Sure. And there definitely were emails that went out and conversations that were had.
Did you have a chance to meet with Chris?
Nope, I did not receive a response to my request for us to sit down with him. So he wants to meet with the entire board.
Well, his email said he was out of town for two weeks.
Yeah.
So I don't know if he'd be back by the 16th, then. Well, I mean, if we tentatively put it on the 16th, and then if he's not, just a week. So what would our goal be as a board? I would like to hear the issues that are by the Boy Scouts, by Council on Aging, what we can potentially do to support Council on Aging and the Boy Scouts. So I, I don't, until I hear, I can't come up with anything. Well, I mean, our job is to come up with a policy. But we need to find out what the problem is first, before we can come up with a policy. So maybe that will come out of it. You need a problem statement to solve to write a policy. I don't know what the problem is besides, I tried to get in the room, it was locked. Yeah, I locked it, you can't get in, because I have issues. I need a little bit more.
So, and that's one of the reasons I wanted to sit down, was so I could get input and then bring a building use policy forward. But we do have something about respect for the building in the visitor code of conduct. But I was hoping to not necessarily do a he-said, she-said kind of thing in, in front of the board. I want to avoid that. I do have some additional information I'd be happy to share. I certainly wasn't trying to embarrass anybody by, you know, trying to air it out. I think that, you know, building use, and, you know, from my perspective, I'm just concerned about protecting the assets that are here. So that's my biggest, you know, concern. And, you know, effective communication is obviously important, and I did offer a substitute space, so.
Well, the thing, too, I, you know, it's, you know, we ended up with gross disgusting cabinets in the back and came up with a policy. So maybe it's looking at that policy and, I don't know. I, without the details, I can't, I can't. So that's why I'm hoping for them. That's really what Kristen's here for. Correct, but the Boy Scout leader specifically asked for a meeting with the board. And I think that we, as the leaders of the town, would be doing a great disservice to say, nope, go talk to them. Well, no, I mean, I, if, if we can, I, I guess I just don't want to make anybody feel uncomfortable, including our Council on Aging Director and Mr. Pendergast. I mean, everybody has a side. And it would be.
has a side and it would be, I think advantageous if Kristen would just meet with them first. I don't know why he doesn't want to.
He's out of town.
Well, when he gets back.
Well, I can't answer that for him. That's not how I'm going to answer.
I don't either. So, and I, you know, he should, he said, she, she said is not what I want either.
Well, I'm hoping that that, that would not come to it. I think that they would be professional enough to say, we need a space for these many days. The space needs to be able to give us blah, blah, blah. This space is not available because of blah, blah, blah. So here's, here's three alternatives. Will that work? No, because blah. I, I don't know. Again, I, I, the only detail I have is what I saw on the emails, which was, we can't get in, something's broken. You know, we changed the lock on the door, can't get in, try another room.
And, you know, that, that was.
But that, right, but that's like the details that you need. So maybe it's some more formal sit down with whoever uses the building to say, these are your responsibilities. And if you don't, then it will happen.
Well, why don't we, you want to talk about it on Thursday?
Okay.
Before the, I guess before the next meeting?
I'm clearly not on any email thread that you guys are talking about.
Oh, well, then maybe we can have them send to you too.
Because I, I don't believe just because someone wants to meet with select board you get on the agenda. I mean, if the thing they want to do with the select board is what is in Kristen's job description to do, they should go through the proper channels, which is talk to the, then work things out with the town administrator before coming to us.
Right.
And that's all I was trying to do.
I wouldn't necessarily say no to them, but I'm not on the thread to know. I, I don't have enough of the conversation to know whether or not I think it is, it is a, they want to come here to talk about policy or they want to talk to Kristen about what the lease says to rent space because the town administrator is in charge of.
I don't want an out of control meeting either.
Of what happens in this building.
Well, we also need to talk about space at 1870. That's starting to percolate as well. So if you're going to do Boy Scouts, then we need to talk about that. Again, I have some ideas, but I need input from.
There is a building use policy that I helped to write for the schools and that would be very similar to what you'd need for 1870 or even here for, for groups who may want to, want to use the, the space.
I know, but with 1870, with what I'm thinking that we could do, unfortunately, we would need input from fire and from the, he's not the fire marshal, he's the fire inspection services. So we would need their input as well.
Yeah.
Which.
In writing the, the policy or?
The solution to the issue that is before us.
You know, I think it's not a new, new issue either. It's been something that's, you know, gone out before.
Absolutely, but I, but.
So it would be nice to have a policy.
Right, so depending upon the input from fire, it could be easily resolved or not. And if it's not, then, you know, could be, you know, you decide. Which I'm going to guess Scott, you're not on that email either. Nope.
Sorry, well, why don't we, why don't we wait until?
I just sent it to Taber.
Okay, but you know, he needs a chance to read it too, so he can participate in this discussion.
Yeah, I, I think what happened was that Peg got put on it by them, so sorry, it wasn't deliberately leaving anybody out.
On the facility study, I was thinking about that today. I know that we're going to meet tomorrow. What happens if they come back? Notice I said if they come back and they said, building A, building B, and building C are beyond repair, our recommendation is to take them down. Who has the authority to say, we're taking them down? Is it us? Is it a town vote?
I would think so. Owners of town owned property.
So then part two is where does that money come from to take down buildings?
Wherever we want to take it from.
That's a great question.
Which might require a town meeting.
Correct. You might have to allocate free cash. You could look at if there's anything left in ARPA. You could go through the capital plan.
Demolition costs through a warrant article?
I mean, so things to consider depending up, given the amount of buildings that are on there. All right, so that talks, that's that ARPA question.
If I could follow up, if we sold a building, the receipts from that just go to general free cash unless, I mean, we could decide somehow we put it in some weird fund, but barring anything we did, anything sold just went to, would go to free cash.
Yeah, I mean, you'd be limited, but you.
Right. We could put it in a, like, I, you know how, I hate every additional fund, so, so knowing that when I make this is that if we had decided that like money from sale, sale of town buildings would go to like upkeep other remaining town buildings, we in theory could legally do that, even though I might end up arguing against it when it came across.
Maybe not directly, but indirectly.
Yeah.
Last week you had mentioned about the web update and how Stephanie, oh, her last name escapes me, was out gathering information, feedback. And so I popped, I popped some stuff in and problem is that when I look around, I find stuff. There is a resource guide that is out in our web. It was dated 2021. There's an introduction by Margaret. So that's a little old. You have incorrect information in there. It's got the dump stickers cost from last year. It's got social media links that it has the name, but no link. You have a reference to Senator Cronin and it's now Senator Kennedy. So I'm not putting that on anybody's list. I am not telling anyone to do it, but we'll need to figure out who's responsible for updating that because.
Even for the future, probably.
Yeah.
I mean, but we do have a web person that is going to be taking a look at it, but that's a one time perhaps, or is it going to be?
I think Stephanie's just gathering input to say what needs to be redesigned, but yeah.
We don't know.
So Stephanie is going to do a redesign and I've asked her also to train one or more people on how to do those updates so that we can continue to maintain the website going forward.
Right, that, that's the trouble, yeah.
But yeah, that document, I don't think that would fall under her purview, so.
Right.
And while I was out there, of course, I looked around and under town wide goals, under the selectmen box, we have a 2022 in progress. So we're way behind on ours. So I think we.
On our website page.
Well, on our goals, our townwide goals. So either we are going to continue to do them, which falls that on us, or we are not going to do with them. But again.
Townwide meeting select board goals or town administrator goals?
Nope, selectmen goals.
Okay, so it's selectmen goals. But I think, I thought we had a discussion about having our goals be the town administrator goals, but.
Then we need to look at that because again, it has 2022 in progress.
Yeah.
A little behind.
All right.
And then one last one, speaking of goals, Kristen, I know a couple of months ago we sat down and we tried to hammer out goals for you and I know some have fallen off the list. Psych. Can you update and provide that so we can see like the ones that are completed? Because I know Scott had made mention of, hey, you may have one on your list, but it's going to take like six years to do. So.
Sure.
And again, just because we scratched three off doesn't mean three new come on. Just want to see, because I mean.
What's there and what's not.
Right, the courts are done.
Right.
The web's done, you know, you found the web designer person. Personnel goals, I think, or the personnel policy I think was on there, check. So there's like three or four that you can just give us an idea.
An email, I'll email it, talk out to you.
Okay.
Send it.
Sure. See, so all that was just a few questions.
One of my advice.
Did you save something in?
Doing those things?
Yes.
Oh, no.
Make it smaller, like does something actually have to be.
Remember his comment.
No.
I think I've done it.
Fewer things have to be updated. That's true for like the town as a whole. The fewer things we try to do for people, the less we have to try to keep up and just like the fewer buildings, the less maintenance we have to do and.
It makes perfect sense. And I, one of the things we talked about when she and I sat down was there's some duplication of things in multiple places. And so really just also cleaning up the homepage and making it very simple.
Yeah, I mean, there's some easy stuff and maybe it's the display on my giant monitor, but code red is like down here and I'm thinking code red.
Should probably be up a little higher.
Needs to be up at the top, you know, type of thing. And the photos that are on there can, and it was an ask, can you please put Berlin photos on there and get rid of stock image photos? Marty Miller probably has eight bazillion pictures of this town that if she said, hey Marty, I need a picture of BMS school bus.
So the ones that are on the front page?
There's, there's a couple. Yeah, there's a couple.
Because I thought one of them was.
One is Carl, so that's legit.
Yeah.
And one is the center of town, that's legit, but it has a random one of a school bus in a snowstorm.
And, and like lovely telephone.
Yes.
Going down a hill.
Yes, so.
Her husband is actually a photographer and he offered to take some updated photos as part of this.
And again, talking to Marty would be.
Marty do it.
Can someone put me in touch with Marty?
Yep, that's June Miller's husband, yep.
Yeah.
Oh, Marty, Marty Miller.
Marty Miller.
Marty Miller.
I will reach out to June.
All right. Are we moving on? Okay, Boston Post Kane discussion. I believe you were going to update us on that?
Yes, so we discovered that the Victoria had sent a letter out to the oldest resident in town and gave a timeframe for a response and no response was received. So we moved to the next resident in town and we took a long look at the list and I know we talked about it a little bit last meeting, but the criteria being what they are, citizenship, five years in town, and I forgot what the other one is. The oldest resident in town appears to be Evelina Romelli. So the next step would be to send her a letter asking her if she would like to accept the honor. It is an optional honor and I have drafted a letter that's in the board packet for your review.
Okay. She David Romelli's mom?
I have no idea.
Letter looked fine by me.
Yes, that's the knowledgeable one up there.
Do we need to revisit the rules around the Boston Kane Award at all or are we good?
I would, but in my list of things I'd like to fix of town policies, it's just not in my top like 50.
It looks like they were last amended January 31st of 22.
Yeah, I couldn't remember what we did to, last year that.
Well, was it because we got the pins or is it because?
It was post, whether or not we could.
Do a posthumous.
Yeah, posthumously give it to someone. That was the change.
Oh, okay.
It allows that to happen if we so choose.
Yep, all right.
That was the, that was the small tweak we did.
Boy, you're good.
Wow, that's impressive.
Some days I remember details.
So do, you don't really need a vote for this, you just.
The letters could be signed by the three of us. So I think if it's signed by the three of us, we should.
I think a vote would, would be nice.
I would send this letter out as it was drafted.
If you're com, okay, then I'll actually print it and you can.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 So I think the last person, we didn't say the name out loud in the meeting.
We didn't, but because I did my homework this time and I was confident, that's why I said the name.
Okay, that's fine.
Sorry, but I know, I know what you're saying because if they weren't interested, yeah, I, I follow.
Okay.
Sorry, if they're not interested.
We apparently need to vote on an amendment to 72 Carter purchase and sale agreement?
Yes, this is just a time extension to October 31st for, at 2:00 PM for closing on the purchase and sale. They need a little bit more time to get everything through the courts.
Okay.
I actually have the signed document by them here.
Sounds fine to me. I'll make the motion to amend the purchase and sale to, to postpone the closing till October 31st at 2:00 PM.
Do I hear a second?
Yes, second.
I know. They had already signed it, so that's why I.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 The, the letter they've already signed has our titles wrong. Is that could be a problem for us? Should we hand change it or do we, we're fine deciding?
Sign it's a title.
I actually meant to mention that. Thank you for mentioning it.
Now, there was an issue at Concom last week in regard to this, that the money that they had requested did not cover legal fees. So they're going to need to come up with that money. Does that impact this at all?
So they didn't request money for legal fees is the problem.
Right, they only requested like $5 and they should have requested eight to cover that.
So what happened was the CPA funding that was requested was only for the actual purchase, not for pre-purchase costs or closing costs or anything of that nature. So it's a learning experience for everyone to make sure those are included moving forward. Also, there's a cost for a phase one environmental that had to, thank you, that had to be done at the recommendation of council that we were of the understanding could come out of CPA funds, but unfortunately after further review, because it was an article that had already been passed by town meeting for a project, you can only do that in the exploratory phase, not once you've already added, allocated funding to a project, so.
So then they won't be able to come back for this CPA and say, hey, we, we paid $3 to do this. Can we have the $3 back out of CPA, correct?
I don't believe so because they're already into the project implementation phase, so they're past that part. But they can ask for a reserve fund transfer if need be later on in the season. And I've been trying to figure out how we can help with some of the legal fees if possible. But our legal budget is running higher than expected already, so it's a lot going on.
Okay. Will we be moving on to business? All right. We have an appointment of Catherine Murphy as the Assistant Treasure Collector.
Yes, so June, Paul, and myself conducted the interviews. Catherine Murphy has seven years of experience as an assistant treasurer collector and also a bit of experience as a treasure collector for a little while. She's got a great positive attitude. I think she'll be a wonderful addition to our team. So the three of us did recommend her for the position.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I would move to appoint.
And a second?
Second. Oh, she has Vadar experience.
Yeah.
That's like the bad word. We need to really get going on that, yeah.
Harper's and Vadar.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
No, that's good.
Then we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Which brings us to board questions on the agenda, agendas or liaison updates.
I started with saying, so the housing trust met last week and in addition to things I've already talked about, we are probably looking at putting together an article for May town meeting.
Okay.
To assist with the development of a town owned parcel towards an affordable housing unit. Fisher would have to go out to RFP, but it would be a type of program we expect like whoever the, won the RFP to have the, the future homeowner do some sweat equity into the property.
So auctioning a town owned parcel or?
We, we'll do the logistics. I, I know that we can't just say we want to give it to person X.
Right.
And so we'll do a, we'll go through whatever the right procedures are to, but we believe that with some of the stuff we've seen, there are both potentially some parcels that might work and, and we're working on trying to figure out that logistics. But we figure we can get a placeholder on the, get, get it through because it's going to take, we're looking at CPA money for it.
Okay.
And from some of the advice we've already gotten, we think in the hundred and to $200,000 range of a subsidy, we could get a potentially new house built on a piece of property and sold at an affordable price to a, a future homeowner.
So it's just one, a singular.
This will start with, this might be, we believe there are developers out there that could do like a couple, do one every other year or so, maybe every two or three years, provided there are plots to do. And potentially sometimes might not just be plus the town on, we might, you know, let it be known that this is a process that could work and there might be people out there who own some plots of land who will be willing to donate it to, especially with a nonprofit developer to help build some stuff in town and might take some work with planning, but we, we think that the will is there. We figured start the process now and, and figure it out as we go. So the second and third and fourth ones might not take us three years to get done.
Have you seen any sample RFPs that other communities have done for this? Because I'd be curious to see. I'm not familiar with the model.
Yeah, I'm sure we could because it has been done in several other towns.
Right.
And, and are you going to sort of keep planning board in the loop or?
Yes, yeah. And Tim Reilly was even at our last meeting as we were talking about some of these things, so.
Good.
And we have some other thoughts of some other uses for some of the other funds, but CPA requires town approval. but CPA requires town approval where, for the other funds, actually the Housing Trust can just spend. But we had some interesting conversations about whether or not some of the money would be best spent. There are some 40Bs that have been on the market, whether or not to stop them going to affordable or to go to, because of the free market, whether or not the town would, could be buyer of last resort, where we could afford to hold on to it, where the current owner might not be able to. Or some of the 40B housing units that are owner occupied in town might have been occupied for a while and having a place, having an interim owner between the current owner and the new owner where the town could put a little bit of money into like refreshing the appliances or the carpet or other stuff, so that someone's not getting into a home that's already near the edge of what they could afford and suddenly have to replace, you know, that 10-year-old refrigerator, 10-year-old, I don't know if they have washers or, but one of the ones we looked at was 12-years-old, like still has the original 12-year-old white carpeting that it came with. And, you know, a new owner trying to put in, right, a new owner trying to put in carpeting. It also might, oh, show better and sell faster if someone walking in didn't go, I have these 15 projects I have to do and this is the first home I've ever owned and I'm already going to be a little overwhelmed, that might help that transition better. But those two projects are neat. We're trying to figure out both the logistics and, you know, you don't want to sink $200,000 into a property that's only going to sell for 190 in the first place. So how do we, how do we stretch some of the funds we have? And so I, we're getting to where that meeting's getting more than just theoretical stuff. We're now really trying to figure some stuff out and want to have some projects to kick off soon.
All right, is that?
Yep.
Your one and only?
Yes.
Okay.
For now.
I had a Council on Aging meeting that I attended, September 26th. There were two guests who were interviewed and interested in a Council on Aging membership. There's only one vacancy, however. So that was Linda Tomassino and Linda Robinson. Both seemed good candidates to me. There's a new kind of yoga being offered and I'm not real clear on that. A new van driver pending, rides, so rides have been limited. Flu clinic set up for October 12th at BMS, 3:30 to 6:00. Sign up is needed. There will be a COVID clinic on October 25th at North Brook 2 from 10:00 to 1:00 and you need to register by 10:20. A grab and go is going to be offered again, October 25th. Sign up with the Council on Aging Director. Entrees will be chicken and scrod. And a $35,000 grant was received for literacy and seniors learning technology. And that will be starting 2020, in 2024. The next hybrid meeting is 10:24 at 4:00 PM. A lot of numbers in that one, huh?
All right, Energy, as I mentioned last week, they're starting to kick around the charging station. So Corinne Gustafson reached out, I said, here's the email, here's their next meeting. Done for that, so that's tomorrow. So we'll see if she shows, you know, get some good input on that. Concom, they got a lot of things going on, so that's Wednesday's meeting. And FinCom, though I'm not a liaison, Scott took your opinion and I started asking pointed people, would you be interested? And of course, they all ran screaming from me, but one person did come back and said yes. She found a resource, so once again, here's FinCom's email, here's the chair, here's the meeting, fill out the application. Done. So we'll see if that person decides to join FinCom, but may have found you a, may have found a FinCom person for us.
All right.
See, it's not that bad.
I know. I was just thinking, in order to give you a heads up, Peg, that I have a daughter who's having a baby any, anytime now. And so should I not be available, you need to be prepared.
You're in charge. Seriously, you think I am not prepared, really?
Good luck to you.
Okay, I need to be more prepared than that.
No, but you know what? You're doing sticky notes. I'm really impressed over there, you know, with your sticky notes. So in the event that you're not, just Kristen has my number, so just holler.
Or I'll let you both know.
Thank you.
Just never know. All right, then we have no executive session needed, so I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And seconded.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.